Good afternoon, everyone. I would like to welcome you to our board meeting tonight. To access translation, please click on the globe icon on the screen. We are heading into our closed session for tonight. Before we do, we're here to listen to any public comment that might be about our closed session items. The public gets two minutes for public comment per speaker. The closed session items that we will be discussing are: Conference with legal counsel regarding existing litigation, conference with legal counsel regarding second existing litigation, conference with labor negotiators, public employee appointment, and we are looking at four liability claims. Ms. Cornet, do we have any public comment?
No public comment.
Thank you. We will be back out for our open session at 6:30 PM. Thank you so much. Good evening, everyone. I would like to welcome all of you to our board meeting. I apologize we ran late from closed session. To access translation, please click on the globe icon below on the Zoom screen or at the John, you can go to the back of the room to get the materials. We are returning from our closed session. After opening procedures, the public will have opportunity to make public comment. The board has changed public comment format. We have opportunities on non-agenda items in person through the Zoom app and by telephone at the beginning of the meeting. Public comment will last one hour. The time allotted for each speaker is two minutes. If you're attending the meeting in person, you will need to submit a request to address the board form to indicate your desire to speak on an agenda item. After it's been turned into staff, they are placed in order when they are turned in. We also call on speakers one at a time and alternate between public comment at the John and one on Zoom. If participating via Zoom, you will need to raise your hand by clicking the appropriate icon in the Zoom app or by pressing start night if accessing the meeting by phone. No yielding of time or substitution of speakers permitted. The public will also have an opportunity to make public comment on agenda items after the staff presentation for each discussion and action item. The public has 10 minutes per item and one minute per speaker. Due to the Brown Act, board members cannot discuss items that are not on the agenda and do not usually respond to items presented in public comment. Now we're going to move to our opening procedures. First, we have our pledge of allegiance. If everyone could please rise. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Now for a land acknowledgement, we recognize that we are presently on the lands of the Chichen Yocuacma, Carkin, Aloney peoples and acknowledge them as the first inhabitants of the land we currently occupy. Dr. Hurst, can you please take roll call?
Absolutely. President Gonzalez Hoi.
Present.
Trustee Clerk Smith Folds.
Good evening, everyone. Present.
Trustee Reckler. Thank you. Trustee Christian.
Good evening, present.
Trustee Phillips.
Present.
Trustee Cypress Sir.
Good evening, present.
Trustee Calip.
Good evening, present.
All present.
Thank you, sir.
And now we're going to move to our report from closed session. Dr. Hurst, do we have anything to report out?
Yes, sir. The board voted to approve the appointment of Ms. Lisa Towes as a new director of communications by a vote of three yeses, trustee Smith Folds voting no, and trustee Phillips absent at the time. Item number A21, the board voted to approve settlement OAH case number 2023090462 by unanimous vote with trustee Phillips absent. Also, the board voted to approve the appointment of Tracy Manapis as the principal of Mercy Elementary School by unanimous vote with trustee Phillips absent. Additionally, regarding agenda item A2.5, the board voted to reject claim 630257 related to alleged personal injury. The members voted as follows, four yeses and trustee Phillips absent. Then finally, regarding agenda item A2.5, the board voted to reject claim number 629516 related to alleged personal injury. The board voted as follows for yeses and trustee Phillips voting no. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Hurst. Now we're going to move to our public comment. Ms. Cornet, do we have public comment tonight?
Yes. Our first public comment is Sam Clear. Please come to the podium.
Hi, my name is Sam Clear, and I have had the privilege to teach at Siege Elementary School for six years. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today. We need to fill our teacher vacancies and discuss the truth. With it being my seventh year, I have seen how teacher vacancies can affect a student's education and morale. There have been years when I was a student's first teacher ever. Last week, I went to a parent-teacher conference for a child that hadn't worked with a classroom teacher for multiple years. Today, we are short four teachers at Siege. It is a small school. That makes up almost a fourth of our teaching staff. Unfortunately, Siege is not unique. Title I schools experience the most teacher shortages. We cannot ignore this equity issue. We need to respect these families and teachers. We need to prioritize teacher recruitment and retention, or students will continue to go to school without teachers. Thank you.
Our next public comment is Jen Kitzner. Please unmute yourself.
Good evening. Board and everybody. Um, our school too will be leaving, losing two teachers that we knew about at the beginning of school in the next month. But I also want to talk about other things. For reading instruction, we really need to have reading intervention for grades K to 2, not just waiting until third grade and then expecting that if we give them integrated interventions in third grade, they're miraculously going to learn everything up through the end of third grade and be able to read at grade level. This doesn't happen this way. Students need to start getting this intervention immediately, starting in kindergarten if they need interventions. The other thing I'm worried about is our ELD. Is there a requirement for newcomer support? Um, if we want to impact our reclassification numbers, all newcomers really need their supports. I'm hearing, oh, I have no one to give that support to your students at my school. My, these two students have lost an entire semester without their supports. I also have questions about the ratio for TK and K. What am I supposed to do when my aide is out sick and no one picks up the job? I've been told, well, I have no one for you. Just time card it. But I need to have a 12 to one ratio. And oh my gosh, what if I'm out sick? I had to go in for a surgical procedure. What if I'm out sick and no teacher picks up the job for my aide? They can't split those kids into other classes because now all of those classes that have TK kids have to have a 12 to one ratio. What is the procedure? How is this supposed to be handled? Thank you very much for hearing my questions and hopefully I will find answers in the future.
Our next public comment is Kim Chamberlain.
Good evening. I'm Kimberly Chamberlain. I have PTE Local 21 SSA Chapter President. Last week was a fantastic week. We had good weather, a lot of great attendance by our students and wonderful activities participated in. Next week, we will be having a holiday break, which hopefully everybody will have a good, long rest for three days and then enjoy family for two days, hopefully. I encourage all staff, board members, to continually encourage students to come to school over the next several weeks. We have staff members in SSA that are showing up to make sure that there's those students at our school sites are taken care of, that they are showing up. So we would hope that we could continue to have our students show up. Please encourage students to participate in all the activities. You showing up and I do see you at school sites does make a difference. It means that students like Ms. Smith Folds shows up and I see her continuously. It's um, participating in events. I see Mr. Gonzalez Hoi participating in events. I love being able to see those faces out there, talking to students, talking to staff members to see that our board members care and communicate with them. Please continue to do that. It is a wonderful way to show that you are respecting the job that they are doing. Thank you.
Our next public comment is Sandrine. Can you please unmute yourself and state your last name for the record?
Hi, thank you so much. My name is Sandrine DeMathieu and I'm a kindergarten teacher at Nystrom Elementary. First of all, thank you so much for having the, taking the time to listen to me this evening. This is my second year as a teacher. And last summer, my grade level team lead left for Benicia Unified for better pay and benefits. We were unable to hire a third kindergarten teacher. And as a result, a colleague has been teaching a TK and kindergarten combo class, meaning that she has doubled the prep from juggling two curriculums for each subject and redesigning her schedule and materials to fit two very different age groups. As a second teacher with only my preliminary credential, this has affected me as I no longer have access to an experienced teacher in my grade level to mentor me. We have no prep time and no prep teachers. I take on extra duties such as ILT, lesson planning for my team, leading collaboration meetings, as well as supporting this colleague mentioned earlier with her combo class so that she can learn the new kindergarten curriculum. Many other grades on my site have vacancies as well. We are still missing a second grade teacher and a fourth grade teacher at my site. Without an experienced and a reliable educator in our classrooms, behaviors are getting out of hand and are impacting the learning of entire classrooms. Students need stability in order to learn. Subs are not the answer. We need a teacher in every single classroom. Thank you.
Our next public comment is Andrea Livinghouse. Please come to the podium.
Good evening, school board. Um, I'm an executive board member of UTR and a speech language pathologist in West Contra Costa. I'd like to use this time to talk about how our educator shortage affects current educators. I asked my K-12 SLP colleagues what I should pass on to the school board tonight, so I'll read a list. Our assessment team has had to fill in at open sites, leading to services not being delivered at our own sites. Because of substitute teachers moving students to different classrooms, SLPs cannot locate students to deliver services. Special education teacher colleagues cannot have a lunch break because students need supervision due to the age shortage. And it is hard to get good data with teacher shortages, which is leading to delays in referrals. I'll now talk about a recent climate data survey conducted at my site, El Cerrito High School. When asked whether there is enough staff to adequately meet student needs, 37% responded strongly disagree. One of my colleagues spent many hours this school year in addition to her full-time job providing coverage for an extensive support needs class who still does not have a teacher. She told me the lack of qualified, a qualified permanent teacher has put immense pressure on service providers to meet students' needs. It has put her and her sped team in a position outside of what they are capable of doing. I ask you to think about the impression we are giving our new hires who have yet to put roots here. The amount of vacancies we have appears as a red flag. The good news is West Contra Costa has the potential to turn these dire situations around. Tonight, you will be hearing from our bargaining co-chairs sharing solutions as to how we can alleviate our staffing crisis within the district. I ask you to remain student-centered by listening to educators on the ground. We have solutions that will help fix this crisis but are reliant on your leadership for this change to take place.
Our next public comment. It's Christina Huerta.
Good evening. My name is Christina Huerta and I'm a teacher at Kennedy High School. I decided to address the board tonight to once again mention that Kennedy is having a very challenging year due to certificated and classified vacancies on our campus. We started the year with a vacancy in music, one vacancy in PE, two vacancies in English, and one vacancy in Spanish. And that's just the teaching staff. We're also missing a school community outreach worker, a registrar, and a CSO. For me, I'm in the Spanish department and because no Spanish teacher was hired to teach Spanish 1 and 2, I was asked to take on an extra section this year. I have been teaching 17 years and I had managed to avoid ever teaching an extra section because having to plan for an extra class while simultaneously losing my prep time affects my work-life balance. Additionally, it means that I sometimes feel that I'm failing my students because my energy level is so low by the end of the day. Even with those valid reasons, I accepted to take an extra class because I didn't want students to deal with teacher vacancies. But taking that extra section didn't do much because there are still six sections of Spanish 1 and 2 that have no teacher assigned to them. Those students have not completed a quarter of the school year without a certificated permanent teacher. They're enrolled in Spanish 1 and are receiving no instruction, so I'm not sure how we will even be able to move them into Spanish 2 next year. And I'm not the only one who was asked to take on an extra section. And if teachers are not teaching an extra section at Kennedy, then their period subbing several times a week. All of this additional stress has created staff fatigue and it is being felt by every adult on campus. Kennedy's office staff has to scramble in the mornings to find period subs. Sometimes administrators have to cover classes. All of this pressure is then placed on the students because they aren't really the ones who are suffering by the shortcomings of this district. We need to make sure that we can recruit and retain teachers for all.
Our next public comment is Jeffrey Bean.
Good evening. Trustees and Dr. Hurst and staff. I am Jeffrey Bean. I teach fifth grade at Shannon Elementary in Pinole. You heard from me a lot from me a lot last year when six weeks into the year, I had to have my students shuffled due to the teacher shortage. Um, I lost, I had to pick five students to leave my class and join a different class and I had to absorb 11 fourth graders into my fifth grade class. Um, the problems have not gone away. Uh, this year, uh, the fifth grade class next door to me did not have a permanent teacher until 11 weeks into the school year. Uh, some of those students were the ones who, uh, most of those students were affected last year also. And luckily, we had a long-term sub for the first five weeks. And after that, there was a series of daily or couple days subs. The principal filled in here and there when she could. Uh, and also the students were split up among other classes at the school, uh, on some days. Um, I really, uh, was sad about this because those students were ones who had been in my class the previous year and had already gone through a difficult time. And I know that you don't have all the power to solve this, um, but you do have some of the power. And when we're, when our union is bargaining for higher salary this year, um, I hope that you don't draw it out the same way you did last year. Um, we shouldn't have had to wait and get almost to a strike, which was a lot of work to prepare for before we got the raise that was sufficient to make us hope the teacher shortage would be solved. It wasn't enough, but I can't imagine how things would have been if we hadn't gotten that salary increase. So I hope that this year you'll put your best offer forward and get us the maximum salary you can get so that we don't have to go through this and my students don't have to go through this next year. It won't be fair to them. Thank you for your time.
Our next public comment is Charzad Fernandez.
Hello, my name is Charzad Fernandez and I'm the parent of a special needs child with autism. Um, my son's name is Caspin Fernandez and he is in kindergarten at Hannah Ranch. I've been in contact with a number of people in the last couple of months and none have provided any clear definitive date as to when a speech therapist will be provided to him. In fact, voicemails have been ignored, emails have been delayed. I've been passed along and pacified with his deficits. Any further delay puts him in a predicament and it widens the educational gap of where he should be based on his IP, which are legal documents. Caspin is not receiving speech therapy is extremely detrimental to his growth and development and ultimately his future. My heart is always so heavy when I talk about him knowing our son has to wait for help when the need is now. Compensation is the constant verbiage given to me by Pralita and Guntry. And that is not to pacify my need. We need it now and we will not stop advocating for him until services of FAPE, free, appropriate, and public education are met. He is a human being just like anyone else's child and he deserves to thrive just like any of all your children. Thank you.
Our next public comment is Raca Ray.
Hello, uh, good evening, board. My name is Raca Ray. I teach biology and chemistry at Kennedy Middle School, or Kennedy High School, excuse me. Um, I will keep it short because it's late and I'm tired. Um, I do want to emphasize what Christina Huerta just said. Um, having a third of our staff working at 120% is not a solution to the teacher vacancy crisis. Um, I also want to speak as a science teacher in general because we have a real, real big problem retaining science teachers in this district. Um, at Helms Middle School, they have two science vacancies and two math vacancies, which means if your student goes to Helms, there's a coin flip as to whether they get a math or a science teacher. That's unacceptable. Um, at the end of the day, the reality is as a science teacher, you can go work in a lab tomorrow and make about three times the amount of money. So the STEM teachers that you have in this district are extremely dedicated to their students. Um, these vacancies are causing everyone to burn out. Um, it just constantly feels like you're failing. Um, it doesn't feel like students are able to contact as many adults as they might need because there's just fewer adults. Um, I, I really don't know what else to say at this point other than we're all very, very, very tired. And there just has to be a better solution than what we're currently doing. Thank you.
Our next public comment. Daniela Valenzuela, please unmute yourself.
Muy buenas noches, queridos integrantes de la mesa directiva y público general. Mi nombre es Daniela Valenzuela y soy estudiante de Henry High School. El año pasado vine aquí en busca de ayuda y me sentí feliz escuchada cuando mandaron a alguien a la escuela ayudarnos. Pero por motivos que desconozco este año esa ayuda nos fue arrebatada. Ahora hay muchos alumnos que se encuentran desconcertados y no saben qué hacer o con quién ir por ayuda. He visto varias caras nuevas en la oficina pero desconozco quiénes sean o cuál es el papel que estos juegan en la escuela ya que no han sido presentadas formalmente. Habían varias personas con las cuales podíamos ir a hablar sobre nuestros problemas pero como dije y revuelvo a recalcar ya no están, desaparecieron de un día para otro. Hace unos días se quitó la vida una joven de tan solo 16 años de Pinole High School. En mi escuela han habido ya varios casos de personas que no solo han pasado, han pensado en suicidarse sino que también lo han intentado. Alumnos que no se sienten escuchados o que tienen miedo de hablar con alguien y que en vez de sentir apoyo se sienten juzgados y por lo mismo tienen miedo de ir a hablar con alguien. El año pasado vi una gran mejora en muchos de mis compañeros después de la ayuda que ustedes enviaron cuando vine aquí con ustedes. Y este año espero tener la misma respuesta positiva. También espero no tener que volver a este lugar a hablar con ustedes sobre este mismo problema. Muchísimas gracias a todos por su atención.
Muchas gracias, Daniela. Daniela, si nos podrías mandar un correo electrónico con lo que nos acabas de decir para que el resto de la mesa directiva pueda entender lo que nos dijiste. Este, nos ayudaría mucho. Entonces, si nos podrías mandar un correo, te lo agradecería. Y nosotros lo podemos traducir. Gracias. For the board, I just asked her to send us an email with what she said and we can translate it so that everybody else can hear what she said. Thank you.
Our next public comment is Sarah Creely.
I'm going to read an email that I sent this morning to Mr. Fleischman, Ms. Vicroy, Ms. Smith Folds, and Mr. Hurst. There has been no speech therapist at Hannah Ranch for more than 60 school days. That's 12 school weeks. As I think you already know, the parent that called is how I learned about this because her child, one of her children is a sibling, the one she was speaking of, of one of my students. His need is great, as you heard, and it is legally required by And it is legally required by his IEP. Last year I had a second grade student who had speech therapy and it was critical for him. At the beginning of the year, I couldn't understand almost everything he said and he loved to talk. Fortunately, he kept loving to talk. And by the end of the school year with speech therapy, I could understand literally everything he said. Being able to communicate clearly is essential to social emotional health and growth and academic success. I've been a teacher at Hannah Ranch for twenty-seven years and I was a special education teacher at Downer Elementary and in San Francisco Unified School District from nineteen eighty-nine to ninety-two, when I was hired by this district. In my thirty-four years of teaching, I have never seen such recklessness in disregarding student IEPs to allow this situation to go on for sixty-four days and who knows how much longer is outrageous and illegal. Last one. Oh gosh. Children with special needs deserve to have their rights respected. Their IEPs are legal documents and they must not be ignored.
Our next public comment is Tara Fay. Please unmute yourself.
Hi there. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Tara Fay and I'm proud to teach music at Pinole Middle School. One of my colleagues from Kennedy High School earlier mentioned that their Spanish program is under duress and the stresses of taking on an additional class period, losing our preparation time. This rang very true from my site as well. For the third year in a row, we don't have a Spanish teacher and our students aren't learning anything through edgenuity. They definitely aren't prepared for high school Spanish. In fact, I have a student who is fluent in Spanish, who is failing his Spanish class because of technical issues that wouldn't exist if we offered in-person instruction. This isn't student-centered learning and it's no better for our staff. Those who've taken on an additional period are burnt out and have no time to prepare for their classes. And God forbid somebody gets sick or needs to go to a doctor's appointment. Since there are no subs, we have to sub during our preps, which we no longer have. You see the dilemma. We're one of the lucky sites with only that one vacancy, but there should be zero. Our colleagues at other sites who have maybe a third of their site vacant are drowning under the extra weight they're being asked to carry. We need to focus on retaining quality educators who are leaving the district in droves. As negotiations with UTR resume, I urge you to listen to our bargaining team because their demands are rooted in truth, equity, and the needs of our students. When we can't do our job, they can't learn. Thank you.
Our next public comment is Amelia Calderon.
Good evening. I am here to paint you a picture of what vacancies do to the life of a math teacher. I've been in this district for almost ten years and I love my job teaching at Richmond High. And I gotta tell you, sometimes I question my life and it's because of, for example, twenty-eight elementary school vacancies. Because of the vacancies for elementary school teachers, I get, I get students asking me questions like, can I have a calculator for eight minus three? I have, I have to teach these students algebra and I have to teach these students piecewise functions and they don't know what the opposite of addition is. Now, it's not that they're dumb. They don't have teachers in elementary school. They're not learning the concepts. It's not, and I try to like, you know, okay, let me just teach you real quick, but it's conceptually not there. And it's really hard. I need, I'm not, I'm not an elementary school teacher. I don't know how to teach integers like the amazing ways that they do. So it's like, okay, let me find time to do this in the curriculum. We're already behind on. And then of course, middle schools, I mean, Helms are feeder school. They started the school year without any math teachers at all. They are still running at half steam and for that reason, they're like looking at me and saying, how do I, how do I graph a line? I don't even know how to plot a point. How do I plot a point? And I just feel so bad for the kids. It's so unfair. It's so, so miserable for them in math class because they're so behind. And just like Raca said, my homie from Kennedy, she was saying that it feels defeating as a teacher to try and like teach them when they are so far behind due to all these vacancies building up every year. My kids tell me I didn't have a math teacher for two years in middle school. It's really terrible. Please help. Thank you.
Our next public comment is Haley K. Please unmute yourself.
Thank you. It is my second year teaching and I just wanted to say I appreciate the opportunity to teach in this district. Um, the mission is we provide the highest quality education to enable all students. And at my school, having multiple teacher vacancies, I don't feel like we are following our mission as a district. There have not been certificated permanent teachers in our second grade, in our fourth grade classes. We lost a whole kindergarten class due to not being able to hire a third, a third teacher for the kindergarten group. And now a TK teacher has taken that responsibility. Um, it is my second year teaching and I don't feel like I am getting the support to better educate my students. I have not had anybody to collaborate on new curriculum because my grade level partner left the teaching industry at the beginning of the school year. That has led the other fourth grade class to not have a constant teacher for an entire semester. The assistant principal has been filling that role to provide some stability for those students. But it is not her job to be a teacher for those students and it has impacted the whole school, especially after not having an assistant principal last year. Um, the beginning of the year, we had classroom overages where teachers were told that they could get three percent, three and a half percent extra for the year if they took more students. That is not a reasonable request when we can be filling those classrooms with teachers. That is the solution and it is every right to those students to have a teacher in their classroom. We need to recruit and retain. Thank you.
Our next public comment is Kelly Carey.
Good evening, board members, Dr. Hurst and cabinet members. My name is Kelly Carey, a kindergarten educator at Purries K eight school. I am here this evening to discuss the crisis facing our district, one that has been present for several years now. Currently, there are over sixty vacancies in W C C U S D, leaving thousands of students without permanent certified teachers. I have witnessed this firsthand. As an educator at Purries for the last eleven years, I have seen dozens of teachers either leave the profession, leave the district, as well as have had or continue to have vacancies, leaving our community greatly impacted. One of the missions at W C C U S D is to strengthen our community. How can this be accomplished when our scholars continually see a revolving door of educators, which directly affects the educational prosperity of our community? I urge the board to recognize this crisis head-on and commit not only aggressive recruitment strategies of new teachers, but also focus on retaining our current educators through support, respect, and a fair compensation. Every student deserves to have dedicated, qualified teachers in every classroom. The future of W C C U S D community depends on it. Thank you.
Our next public comment is Jesus Galindo.
Good evening, President Gonzalez, Dr. Hurst, distinguished board members. It's really good to see you. The sole purpose of this district's existence is to provide educational services to all our kids. And for thousands of kids, this is not true. In my hand, I have a report of all the vacancies across our district as of last Friday, according to Edjoin. It's close to seventy. That translates to thousands of kids without an educator in front of them. And what makes this worse, what makes this more gut-wrenching is that when you examine this list, eighty percent of these vacancies are at our Title One schools. Our highest needs kids are being impacted by this. So I hope the public understands that this is not a matter of vacancies. This is a matter of justice, making sure that every single kid, regardless of their background, has a certified educator that allows them to achieve their full potential. It is irrefutable that these vacancies are straining this system, but I'd like to take a step back and focus on the bigger issue here. And that is that these vacancies and our lack of inaction is corroding the trust that the public has in the education system. When I have Emma's mom coming up to me and saying, Mr. Galindo, for the last three years I have brought my student and every single year they enter an empty classroom. How am I supposed to trust this district? It's in our vision, it's in our mission that we are here to provide services and we're not doing that over and over and over again. And in the face of injustice, there's only one response, to fight. To fight until we dismantle that mountain of inequity that our students are facing. We can do something about.
Our next public comment is Salon Harrison.
Good evening, board. Thank you. Um, I would just like to say, um, I've noticed some things in the district, um, this past week. And I want to say thank you to Dr. Hurst's attempt to get some feedback on how the community felt about receiving education in this district. However, I would also like to acknowledge that if we don't see how we're going to use this equity audit that we did and the things around equity that we paid a lot of money for and that he took a lot of last week to, um, get feedback on, I would like to see this. I would expect to see this a part of our board agenda. Every, one of those goals need to be in there so we can monitor is everything that's happening in our district being done with an equity lens. Everything needs to happen with an equity lens. That will ensure that all children are included in the process and decision-making of this board, of your cabinet, of all the educators, that every child deserves to have equity when it comes to receiving resource from this district. So we don't make it intentional to put it part of the agenda, part of every meeting that the public has, that we're making forward progress. I feel it's just another thing that we have that's not implementing anything. So I'm expecting to see consistent movement with all that work we did last week with collecting information from our children in our community to make differences and changes and improve the outcomes for our children, especially black children that are your lowest performing in our district. And what we're needing is to really exercise all the resources we have. This district has a lot of rich resources that we're not using and that we feel are not, you know, equitable for everybody. So please ensure that you don't waste our time last week and make sure that these things are put in place so we can monitor them. Thank you.
That concludes our public comment.
Thank you, everybody who came to do public comment. We are now going to move forward to, we had two requests to address the board. The first one is from Ryan Lowe. I hope I said your name right, sir, if not, correct me from A C Transit. Um, Mr. Lowe, you have, uh, ten minutes. Um, so if you could please put up the, the timer unless you have a presentation. Okay.
There is a presentation on the screen. Thank you. Um, I'm actually not Ryan Lowe. Good evening. My name is Robert Darrell Zari. I'm the Director of Service and Development and Planning for A C Transit. I wanted to share with you, um, our major service change plan that's coming up called Realign. Um, and this is significant because a number of students take A C Transit bus service, uh, to and from school. Uh, so we want to make sure that we, uh, present this to the various school boards, um, and receive feedback. Uh, next slide. So at a glance, A C Transit is the largest public bus-only transit system in California. It's a lifeline service for essential workers, students, low-income, uh, low-income people, seniors, commuters, individuals with disabilities, and anyone wishing to reduce their carbon footprint. We operate bus service, um, throughout the East Bay of the Bay Area, as far north as, uh, Pinole and as far south as Fremont. Um, forty-three percent of our transit riders are, are transit dependent without a car to get to work, school, or medical appointments, or a grocery store. Next slide. So what you see here is a, a map of our bus service, um, and routes in West Contra Costa County. We operate, uh, frequent service along San Pablo Avenue that's shown in red. And then the blue routes are our less frequent routes, um, that, that, uh, circulate through, through neighborhoods and take people to major destinations, including, um, um, Hilltop Mall, um, schools, um, Bart stations, and connecting to other, other routes. Next slide. So today I'll talk to you about, uh, what, what I mentioned earlier, which is Realign. Um, and Realign is taking a look at all of our routes and seeing how they'll, uh, how we can change them to make them better perform. Um, transit operators usually do this about every five to 10 years. Um, it's important one for us because we're trying to change our, our ridership patterns and meet the current conditions post-pandemic. Um, so, uh, today we're going to share, uh, some of those recommendations with you, um, and seek feedback. Um, we're, um, I'm going to show you our guiding principles as well as our, our recommendations. Um, and then we'll refine the, uh, recommendations based upon the feedback that we hear. And then finally, uh, approve a plan by our Board of Directors in the spring and then look to implement our service changes in August of twenty twenty-four, commence it with the start of the school year. Next slide. So the service scenario overview, I'm sure you're familiar with this. Well, A C Transit has, uh, budget constraints, just like, uh, many other public agencies. Um, we have two scenarios that we're putting forward that are cost neutral, meaning that they don't require additional resources. One is called the balanced coverage scenario. So that's looking at all of our routes and then seeing how we can better, um, um, uh, realign those routes so that, uh, they, they better serve what the conditions are today. A second cost neutral scenario is the frequent service scenario. And so that's looking at making bus routes more frequent. Um, we know that when you have buses, bus service that's more frequent, uh, more people ride. Um, but that means there's trade-offs there of taking service from coverage areas, um, and then focusing them on where the most people are. Um, we're also looking at a third scenario, which is unconstrained scenario. That's more of a vision document, um, to really, um, understand what our service could look like if we had more resources. Say there was, um, a revenue measure or, or, um, money from, um, taxes or, or from the federal government or state government, um, what that, what those dollars could do with service. Next slide. So now we'll jump right into the scenarios, um, and, um, I'll, uh, I'll, I'll explain to you some of the, the key highlights and details that are relevant to, um, to West County. Uh, this is line seven. Line seven is one that travels through the El Cerrito Hills and then down Barrett to the El Cerrillo del Norte Bart Station. Uh, most of the changes here are on the southern end in Berkeley, so I won't have to spend too much time on this. Um, but the service in the northern end would roughly stay the same. Next slide. So a big change for the area is, uh, what we're doing on San Pablo Avenue. Currently today, there are three routes on San Pablo Avenue that travel, um, um, from the south in Jack London Square in Oakland, all the way north, um, to, um, Contra Costa College, uh, to the Richmond Parkway Transit Center and Hilltop Mall. And then there's also a leg of it that travels along McDonald Avenue just outside of the school here. Um, so there's three routes there. It's a little bit confusing. Um, two of them are locals and one of them is a rapid service, which is limited stop service that, um, will technically get you up and down the corridor a little quicker. Uh, we're going to change that to two routes, um, and have those routes be evenly spaced. So, um, they would be every, uh, every fifteen minutes for those two routes, so a combined frequency of every seven and a half minutes. And that's really great frequency for you to just walk out to the corridor and not have to, uh, rely on a schedule. But you know that a bus is going to come every seven and a half minutes. Um, the, the, the trade-off to this is that the rapid would go away. And so folks that are traveling along the corridor, long distances, who rely on that rapid, rapid bus to, uh, to, to carry you to your destination quicker, um, that wouldn't be there. Um, but for the most part, everyone else who's on that corridor will actually get more service. The other big advantage here is that McDonald Avenue currently has thirty, thirty-minute frequency today. The other big advantage here is that McDonald Avenue currently has thirty, thirty-minute frequency today. We would actually change that to fifteen-minute frequency, which is a big plus for the corridor. Um, the portion above, uh, Contra Costa College between the college and the mall, um, that's currently served by line seventy-two. Line seventy-two is a trunk route. It travels along San Pablo. San Pablo is one of our busiest corridors. We don't want it traveling, meandering through neighborhoods, so we're going to change that to line seventy-six, which will travel through there, which does some of that service today. We'll just have it do a little bit more of that. Next slide. Um, this is also a change to line seventy-nine, which, uh, hits El Cerrito Plaza Barts. Um, I think maybe there's some people who may take this route for, uh, El Cerrito High School who travels sort of close there, but this is mainly a, a route that serves North Berkeley. Um, so I won't spend too much time on this one. Next slide. Line seventy and seventy-one are two routes that serve, uh, El Cerrito, Richmond, and, uh, Ciudad San Pablo. Um, right now, the, uh, the seventy runs hourly, um, since the pandemic and seventy-one runs every half hour. Um, what we're seeing is that the demand, actually we flipped on this, so we're going to have the seventy operate every thirty, every, uh, thirty minutes and then the seventy-one operate every sixty minutes. If we look at the frequency, uh, scenario, um, both of these routes would actually operate at thirty minutes, which is a, a good thing, but there's some trade-offs to that, which I'll go into in the next slides. Next slide. So line seventy-four is one of those trade-offs. Um, it's, it's the route that travels up and down Twenty-third Avenue, uh, down to the Richmond Marina. Um, and then it goes up to the college and then continues on along San Pablo Dam Road, um, actually, uh, travels up to serve , uh, Deans High School and then gets to the end of El Sabrani into, uh, I think it's Castro Ranch Road at the end. Uh, what we're proposing in the, in the balance scenario is to take off that little leg by Castro Ranch Road. Um, it doesn't really carry that many people. However, Deans, it would still be served. Um, in the frequency scenario, uh, which is again, um, taking service that's, um, coverage service and adding more frequencies such as to line seventy, um, the service would actually, um, be terminated right at the college. So anything along San Pablo Dam Road in the frequency scenario would no longer exist. This includes service at Deans High School. However, there are school buses, uh, school tripper buses that A C Transit operates that will continue to serve, um, the high school. Next slide. Line L is our transbay route. Um, not many students ride the transbay service, um, but that's our service that goes to San Francisco. We're basically combining, uh, line L and line LA into a single route, uh, to travel to San Francisco. Um, one of the things that we've seen in this, in this plan is that we, um, are de-emphasizing or keeping steady our service to San Francisco, which has actually been quite small since the pandemic, um, occurred. A lot of people are working remote.
Sorry, this was your one minute warning.
Okay, thank you. Um, why don't we go ahead and to the next slide. So I just wanted to talk about our, or quickly talk about our engagements. Um, we are asking to work with various city, uh, governments as well as, uh, boards to, um, provide us comments and feedback. Uh, we want to hear about your, um, um, comments. We ask you to visit our websites, uh, Realign, A C Transit dot org slash Realign. That's R E A L I G N. Um, we'll be able to give you more information. We're, we're doing a number of pop-ups, um, information at bus stops and online community workshops. Um, so we, uh, encourage you to let the district know as well as the families and teachers and anyone else who is impacted by our service changes to please provide their feedback. And next slide. Um, I think I already went over this, uh, final slide. Um, and I think that's it. So thank you very much for your time. If you have any questions or comments, I'm happy to take them. Thank you.
Thank you so much. We appreciate your time. Thank you for coming. Okay, Board. Now we're going to move to our second request to address the board, which is from United Church of Richmond. Ms. Michaletti, did you have a presentation as well?
Uh, yes.
One second. Please give us a second so we can pull the presentation. Would you like me to give you a one-minute warning, Ms. Michaletti, or a two-minute?
Um, I think a two-minute warning would be great. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. You can start whenever you're ready.
Good evening, President Gonzalez Hoi, Clerk Smith-Fulham, Trustees, and Superintendent Hearst. We have our executive board here tonight, who represent all of our members from elementary, secondary, and specialties such as speech and psychology. I'm Gabby Micaletti, one of U T R's bargaining co-chairs, and I spent the past seven years as a first-grade teacher at Verde Elementary. You've just heard from a variety of educators and families in this district about the challenges facing our students and educators due to the many vacancies. Per your numbers, we currently have sixty-five F T E vacancies. These actually reflect more than sixty-five open positions and do not take into account the many educators who have taken on a one-point-two F T E position. These vacancies impact thousands of our students across the district. Forty-eight of these are in Title One schools, with schools such as Perry's, Stige, Kennedy, and Helms experiencing four or more vacancies each. As a district, we are trying to prioritize students' attendance, yet cannot provide educators to make their time at school, one in which they are engaged in learning and building relationships, rather than simply passing time split to different classrooms with rotating substitutes. Our educators are taking on additional burdens to mitigate these circumstances for our students and make up for these vacancies by taking on higher caseloads, higher class sizes, additional duties, and split classes. In addition to this, we see high teacher attrition every spring, which leads to instability in our students' educational experiences within school sites and across the district. Next slide, please. I want to bring your attention to some data from the California Department of Education. Their most recent data, uh, data demonstrates that in twenty-one, twenty-two, W C C U S D members earned on average eleven thousand below the state average, despite living in an expensive part of the state. Furthermore, even with our raises, our average last year was still lower than the state average from the previous year.
Hi, I'm Rochelle Milford. I'm a school psychologist, bargaining chair, and budget ambassador. As you may know, your unaudited actials revealed that the district was fifteen million dollars short of meeting the bare minimum required to be spent on classroom compen- compensation. When unified school districts fail to meet this fifty-five percent minimum, it can result in penalties. However, we believe that our dollars would be better spent on our students rather than paying off fines. Next slide. The first element within our proposal is the concept of longevity, which recognizes members' continuous years of service within our district. We noticed that our brother and sister unions such as W C C A A, S S A, and Teamsters already have existing language around longevity within their contracts. And we believe that, that recognition should be extended to U T R's hardworking and loyal educators for several, several reasons. There should be a correction. It's actually forty percent of our educators are within their first five years of service, which indicates our teachers are leaving early in their careers. In addition, we are seeing a growing trend among neighboring districts now taking unlimited years of service, which eliminates a potential roadblock and incentivizes our more experienced educators to leave. These trends become an even bigger concern when we take the research into account. In a review of thirty studies analyzing the effect of teaching experience on student outcomes, researchers found that teaching experience is positively correlated with student achievement gains throughout a teacher's career. The most striking findings was that teachers, as teachers gain experience, their students are less likely to miss school. In addition, more experienced teachers provided the greatest benefit to students with chronic absenteeism or having seventeen or more absences. Next slide, please.
In addition to longevity, we are also proposing reorganizing aspects of our salary schedule. We're proposing removing four steps to bring the salary schedule down to twenty-three steps. This shorter schedule is more appealing to educators new to this district, and a higher starting wage incentivizes educators to come to W C C U S D. I want to tell you, based on the seniority data from September, sixty-two percent of our members are in their first ten years. So we have forty percent in their first five, and in the first ten, it's sixty-two. While analyzing our salary structure, we noticed that once you pass the first ten years, there's plateaus of the same pay for chunks of two to four years, which is not only demoralizing to our hard-working educators, but coincides with a large drop-off in the experience of our educators. Next slide, please. Finally, the increasing cost of benefits, particularly for families, makes parenthood in this district even more challenging. We're proposing that W C C U S D provide one hundred percent employer-paid Kaiser Family. Many districts nearby, such as Oakland, Pittsburgh, San Ramon, John Swett, and Contra Costa County, all provide one hundred percent employer-paid healthcare and are easily within the area our members could commute to and work. We've given eight potential dates to the district in order to meet, and we look forward to meeting with your representatives in order to address these issues. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Board, now we're going to move to agenda review and adoption. If there are no objections, we'll adopt the agenda as is. Okay, so adopted. Now we're going to move to the approval of the minutes from October twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-three. Are there any changes? Okay, if there are no objections, we'll adopt the minutes as written. So adopted. Now we're going to move to our resolutions for tonight. Dr. Hearst, I'm going to pass it to you.
Thank you. We actually have a member of our Communications Department, Mackenzie Martin, who's going to be reading all of our resolutions. Pass it to Mackenzie.
Thank you. Um, the Bay Area boasts one of the largest confirmed populations of Sikh and Punjabi Americans in the nation and the second-largest gurdwara in the United States, where they provide help to the homeless and needy people around the world, especially during disasters. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the West Contra Costa Unified School District Board of Education recognizes and acknowledges the significant contribution made by the Californians of Sikh heritage to our state, and by adoption of this resolution, Sikhs to afford all residents the opportunity to better understand, recognize, and appreciate the rich history and shared principle of Sikh Americans, their religion, and the tenets of their faith, and the important role that Sikh Americans play in furthering mutual understanding and respect among all peoples.
Thank you. Board, are there any questions on this resolution? Okay, is there a motion anyone would like to make?
Um, I move that we adopt resolution number two-three-two-four-dash-three-nine, Sikh American Awareness and Appreciation Month, November twenty twenty-three.
Thank you. Are there any comments from anyone? Okay, let's move to our vote. Let's start with Trustee Calip tonight.
Calip, yes.
Thank you. Trustee Cypress, sir?
Cypress, sir, yes.
Clerk Smith-Folds?
Smith-Folds, yes.
Trustee Christian?
Yes.
Trustee Reckler?
Reckler, yes.
Trustee Phillips?
Yes.
And I'm a yes as well. Pass unanimously. Thank you so much. We can move to the next one.
Native Americans have made distinct and important contributions to the United States and the rest of the world in many fields, including the fields of agriculture, medicine, music, language, and art, and have distinguished themselves as inventors, entrepreneurs, spiritual leaders, and scholars. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the West Contra Costa Unified School District Board of Education recognizes the month of November twenty twenty-three as National Native American Heritage Month and encourages all educational communities to commemorate this occasion with appropriate instructional activities.
Thank you. Board, are there any questions? Okay, is there a motion they'd like to make?
I move that we adopt resolution number twenty-three, twenty-four dash forty in recognition of National Native American Heritage Month, November twenty twenty-three.
Second.
Thank you. Are there any comments from anyone? Okay, let's move to our vote. Trustee Calip?
Calip, yes.
Trustee Cypress, sir?
Cypress, sir, yes.
Clerk Smith-Folds?
Smith-Folds, yes.
Trustee Christian?
Yes.
Trustee Reckler?
Reckler, yes.
Trustee Phillips?
Yes.
And I'm a yes as well. Pass unanimously. Thank you. We can go to our last one.
Public schools are the backbone of our democracy, providing young people with the tools they need to maintain our nation's precious values of freedom, civility, and equality. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the West Contra Costa Unified School District Board of Education recognizes November thirteenth to seventeenth, twenty twenty-three, as American Education Week.
Thank you. Board, are there any questions? Okay, is there a motion?
I move that we approve resolution number twenty-three, twenty-four dash forty-one in recognition of American Education Week, November thirteenth through the seventeenth, twenty twenty-three.
Second.
Thank you. Are there any comments from anyone? Okay, smooth turn vote. Trustee Calip?
Calip, yes.
Trustee Cypress, sir?
Cypress, sir, yes.
Clerk Smith-Folds?
Smith-Folds, yes.
Trustee Christian?
Yes.
Trustee Reckler?
Reckler, yes.
Trustee Phillips?
Yes.
And I'm a yes as well. Pass unanimously. Thank you. Thank you so much. Uh, now we're going to move to our consent items. Board, are there any consent items anyone would like to pull? Okay, if there are no objections, we will adopt the consent calendar. So adopted. Thank you. Now we're going to move to our superintendent report. Dr. Hearst?
Thank you, sir. Can we bring up the report, please? We're actually going to start our oops. We're good. We're going to start our report with a literacy task force update. And we have Allison Macula, um, on Zoom. She's not feeling well, so she's going to be presenting through Zoom. So Allison, we're going to turn it over to you for the literacy task force update. Allison?
Oh, there we go. I think I was muted.
Okay. There you go.
Good evening, Superintendent Hearst, board members and staff. Um, thanks for letting me come to talk to you about the literacy task force. Um, you, you're well aware of this, but just to review, the goal of this task force is to look at current scholarly research data, um, uh, to, to create a framework and recommendations for our district that can guide our L cap, um, and S P S A's as we move forward. And ultimately, like, the bottom line is to improve the learning experience and outcomes for students. So that's our primary goal. Next slide, please. Our team right now is a, a, a small internal team comprised of, uh, Sonia Neely Johnson, Sanji Bell, Amber Baron, Ian Bader, Catherine Acosta Verpraskas, Benjamin Lay, Mary Ann LaFoss, Christine Hatcher, Jamie Allardice, Gloria Scoggins, Leslie Reckler, Jemilla Smith, Smith Olds, and myself. Next slide, please. So this work right now is, uh, is, um, progressing. It's based roughly on a design thinking or, uh, liberty or just design kind of a, a model where the initial focus is, um, to be gathering information, to be listening, creating sort of the plan for the plan, kind of a, kind of a thing. Um, this is a small internal team at this point, developing some initial recommendations and planning for the broader collective learning or, um, that will develop a more comprehensive plan. and planning for the broader collective learning or um that will develop a more comprehensive plan. We, this work will build upon and alongside the Challenge Twenty-Two Seven Plan and our graduate profile. Also, it'll align with the CDE frame and roadmap and um will be based upon equity as as the underpinning of our work. I just want to add here that there's so much frenzy in the media and public discourse right now around reading. And in public education, we tend to, the pendulum tends to swing back and forth to the next shiny thing. And so I applaud you, Board and Superintendent, for taking a thoughtful, intentional process to be um truly mindful of what of what we want to do, to look to new things rather than recreating something we've already done. Peter Drucker says, "The greatest danger in times of turbulence is not turbulence itself, but to act with yesterday's logic." So we want to be really thoughtful and go slow to go fast. Well, in the spring, we'll look toward that more um community-based learning or community, not based, but a community, a whole community learning, deep collective learning, and some planning for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. And then in true design thinking or liberatory design, kind of, or or even um an improvement model, you you try something and then you're evaluating what do you notice? What do you wonder? Let's let's tweak and refine and iterate and and teaching like any art, it, well, it's an art and a science. And so for us to do it well, if there was a magic bullet, people would have already done it. So we need to be learning continuously. Next slide, please. Some of the things we've been reading, watching, listening to, I've um I've listed here, and they're all links that that people can can go to on their own. In addition, we will, of course, be adding lots more reading and bringing in some researchers. We're lucky to live in an area in which we have researchers right in our own backyard. And we talk about the science of learning and development, which includes reading. But we want to, we want to be focused on the sciences of of teaching and learning so that we get it, get it as right as we can. And that's, we look forward to coming back and updating you more in the future.
Thank you so much, Allison. Hope you feel better as well.
Thank you.
We're gonna move forward in the superintendent's report and discuss the strategic planning process, where we are up to date. We call it Challenge Twenty-Two Seven. As everyone knows, we've been sharing this, that this strategic planning process will take us through now through the year twenty-twenty-seven. Next slide. We wanted to share with you um that we have had three town hall meetings and then the student summit. At the very end of that process, the planning team consisting of trustee Smith Folds, CEO Neely Johnson, Liz Sanders, and myself, and also the comms department, we sat down and we really started looking at the process of the student summit and those town hall meetings. And we wanted to ask ourselves the question around what were the positive things that transpired and what were some of the shout-outs? And we wanted to share that with you. One of the things that we shared was that it was really powerful that we were able to engage in twenty-two school sites across our system, which was more than three hundred students, and just the opportunity to listen to our students and hear their voice and have student engagement was very powerful. Uh, we, as we thought about this process, we thought about technology. There was a lot of collaboration um with the tech department as well. So we said trying innovative, technology-based strategies was a positive. It was also an opportunity for us to really engage with all of our departments. As we think about this entire process, everyone, all of our departments was brought into the conversation, especially including ed services. Also, there's a high percentage of staff engagement. There was an opportunity to teach and to learn with students, sitting down with students. And then the hub and spoke model was simply having this process where we had videotaped certain people, and we had broadcasted that out to the spokes, which was the students at twenty-two different sites. And then another positive was bringing in the ASL interpreters, an opportunity again to hear from our students, and also using again technology, the webcams. We wanted to give a few shout-outs as well. Um specifically, I was at Greenwood Academy. And we wanted to call out LaShante Smith. She did an excellent job facilitating, and I'm sure there was other excellent facilitators across those twenty-two sites. But we wanted to call her name out. And then also to Mr. Johnson, he has a phone system where when students walk into Greenwood Academy, they're given a case. The phones are collected, they're closed, they don't get those phones back until the end of the day. Great system. And then we want to call out uh just the teamwork to make this happen from the executive cabinet team, logistics team, communications team, and the planning team. Next slide. When we're talking about things that we wanted to look at to change, there were a number of things that came up. I'll highlight some of them. The principals, especially um elementary school principals, they really were intrigued about the process, wanted to engage in the process, asked me and us if they could engage. We did not have the opportunity to include them, so our next iteration, we want to make sure we include elementary students. Also, some of our students in the middle schools struggled with the amount of time. We had about two hours. And honestly, some of the high school students struggled as well. So looking at that and how we can be a little bit more strategic. I'm gonna skip down a couple. Uh, one um think about is looking at the format and possibly modeling it after the Special Olympics all-day event that we have been uh part of as well. And then also, um, one of the pieces of feedback that we shared is that even though we looked at the criteria of students and really focusing on sixty percent of those students being the most disenfranchised students, we really wanted to make sure that we considered next time around having enough academic feedback and input as well. And then there was also requests to make sure that we have trained and skilled facilitators, and not just training them, but also an opportunity to have those facilitators collaborate with one another within the rooms. Next slide. And here's some of the questions that have come up that we're actually considering right now about sharing the data out with the community and with the students, and when that's gonna happen. Uh, we actually did present this at the DLCAPS meeting, so we uh have been on that. And then also, what we're considering is when and how we'll take this um to all of our standing meeting places, the PACs and faculty meetings as well. Next slide. This is just designed to share with you that this has been a tight timeline, but also to share that this has been in motion since um I was hired two and a half years ago. So some work has happened, but we're in the final stages. And we are on point and on target. We did meet with um not only the DLCAP committee. We met also with the uh managers across the system to get feedback on goals and action steps as well. The plan is to continue working on the feedback, synthesizing this, bringing it back to the board on December the sixth board meeting for a discussion and presentation. And then the following board meeting, the option for the board to potentially approve the strategic plan. And next slide. I had a great opportunity to um go to Lupine Heels and participate in a Ruby Bridges Walk. And there was a number of people there, students, parents, CEO Neely Johnson was there, chairperson, um Grimsley was there as well. And what was uh really amazing, we had speakers, we had one of our own trustees, I believe, organized the event. It was well-organized. Uh, food as well, a very attention to detail. But the speakers uh came up, and I spoke about my experience growing up in the sixties. And just the courage that um Ruby Bridges at that time displayed, and also how she was feeling, you know, being escorted to the school only whites at that time. And I talked about my experience a little bit as well. Next slide. But we wanted to just celebrate um the courage of Ruby Bridges, but also share with you the schools that participate, participated in it. And these are pictures from Lupine Heels. You can see our students gathered here, holding the the banner. Again, a number of students uh were present. Uh, next slide. I was captivated by this uh quote, uh, so I wanted to share this with you. Racism is a grown-up disease, and we must stop using our children to spread it, quote from Ruby Bridges. And here's another picture on the right that includes um the principal as well, you know, our CEO, Ms. Grimsley, myself, and some other members. I think it's the the A-PAC Chair and the Assistant Chair. And I think that person on the far left is his daughter. Next slide. We also had Collins to participate in the Ruby Bridges Walk, and they sent a number of pictures and video as well, but we wanted to share this with you. Next slide. And this is King. It's very quick. It's just them cheering uh for Ruby Bridges. Go ahead and play that really quick. And I'll share with you um at Lupine Heels, while the kids were doing their walk, we had um trustee Smith Folds and others that was chanting, sort of like the sing-song cadence. And they would say, "When I say Ruby, you say Bridges." And it was just funny just to listen to the students um try to do the chant uh with us. Next slide. We wanted to give a shout-out to all the schools who participated in the Ruby Bridges Walk, from Lupine Hill to Obama, Hannah Ranch, Aloney, Mira Vista, Ella Horse, Washington, King participated, Downer, Collins, and Alinda. And we are hoping, and we shared this also with the managers at the management meeting yesterday, but our hope is that we have more participate next year and that it goes across our district. And with that, that concludes my superintendent report. I'll turn it back over to the president.
Thank you, uh, Dr. Hurst. Board, now we're gonna move to questions. Does anyone have questions on the superintendent report? Okay, we're gonna then move to our first discussion item. No, I'm sorry, our first action item. I apologize. Which is, excuse me, I have a little script. This is a public hearing on the sunshine of the re-opener articles proposal for Article One, Section Three of the current collective bargaining agreement for the twenty-four, twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five school year for the United Teachers of Richmond and the West Contra Costa Unified School District. Tonight, the district board will conduct a public hearing on the re-opener articles proposals for Article One, Section Three of current collective bargaining agreement between UTR, WCCSD to the sunshine requirements of California Government Code, Section three-five-four-seven. During the public hearing, the focus will be on gathering the input of the public, including district teachers, other employees, and parents regarding the re-opener article proposals being presented. The purpose of this meeting is to inform the public about the reopening articles, proposals of negotiations between the district and UTR. Tonight's meeting will proceed as the, as follows. First, the board will open the public hearing. Second, Conrad Tenasichak, Director of Labor Relations slash District Negotiator, will be given five minutes to make a presentation to the board regarding the re-opener articles proposals from UTR and the district. Third, upon the conclusion of Director of Labor Relations' presentation, um, the board president will take public comment on this item. The total time for comment from each participant will be one minute. The total line, the total time allotted for the public comment on this matter is ten minutes. Fourth, the board may ask other questions at that time, and then the public hearing will be closed. At this time, I am opening the public hearing on the reopening articles for the proposal of UTR and the district. And then I invite the district, our district labor director to make a presentation as noted above. So open. I'll pass it to you, Mr. Tenasichak.
Thank you, President Gonzalez-Hoy, trustee Smith Folds, remaining trustees, Dr. Hurst. California Government Code thirty-five-four-seven requires school employers to make public their initial topics for discussion with any represented employee organizations. Additional subjects of negotiation also required to be publicly disclosed when introduced during the course of bargaining. The district is committed toward further establishing a collaborative negotiations model with the bargaining unit over the course of negotiations. In our precess that's attached to the board agenda, you'll see that the current collective bargaining agreement for the United Teachers of Richmond expires on June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-five. The re-opener article proposals between UTR and WCCUSD are in accordance with Article One, Section Three of the current collective bargaining agreement that is in effect from July one, twenty-twenty-two through June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-five. The re-opener clauses are Article twenty-three, Salary, Section One, Article twenty-five, Employee Benefits, Section One, as well as one article by the district and one article by the UTR. Pursuant to Educational Employment Relations Act, the re-opener article proposals are to be negotiated by school district and labor union, must be submitted at a public hearing of the government board. The re-opener article proposals of the West Contra Costa Unified School District to United Teachers of Richmond, along with the re-opener article proposals from United Teachers of Richmond to West Contra Costa Unified School District, at which time the public is allowed to make comment on the proposals. This is part of the sunshining process that must be completed prior to entering into contract negotiations. Once an agreement is reached with each unit, the agreement will be reviewed by Contra Costa County Office of Education under the requirements of AB twelve-hundred, and then brought to the board for ratification. These re-opener article proposals are not related to any current MOU or future MOU. It's important to the public to understand the district and UTR are currently addressing conditions impacting programs, but these contract negotiations presented tonight are not connected to those discussions and public comment should be limited to the terms that are being sunshined. Specifically, Article twenty-three, Salary, Section One, by both UTR and WCCUSD, Article twenty-five, Employee Benefits, Section One, by UTR and WCCUSD, as well as Article ten by WCCUSD. The recommendation is that both the WCCUSD and UTR host the reopen articles, which we did, and that the Board of Education receive public comment on the proposals this evening and approve receipt of the submitted re-opener article proposals. The financial impact is to be determined and will be reflected through an AB twelve-hundred. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tenasichak. Now we're gonna move to public comment. Ms. Cornejo, do we have public comment?
Yes, we have one public comment on Zoom.
Thank you. And if we could put up the one minute timer. Thank you so much.
Okay, Zoom user, please identify with your first name and last name for the record. Please unmute yourself. That concludes our public comment.
Thank you. Board, now we're gonna move to questions. Does anyone have any questions? Okay. The public hearing and the presentation on the reopen articles proposal from UTR and the district is hereby closed. Board, could I please have a motion to approve the reopen articles for both WCCUSD and UTR?
I move that we accept the reopen articles bargaining proposals from the United Teachers of Richmond and West Contra Costa Unified School District.
Thank you. Are there any comments from the board? Trustee Phillips, if we could please put up a three minute timer. If you wouldn't mind, you're waiting for that, trustee Phillips.
Thank you. As we head into this bargaining season and folks' voice, their opinions and their positions. I would like people to do their best to remember the context that we are working in. My understanding is that we have a contracts committee. That, and correct me if I'm wrong about the number, that you all are looking for five million dollars to cut. So if we have to cut five million dollars. How do you give twelve billion dollars in raises? And I know that this is not a negotiation happening at this table. And I'm not trying to bargain with anybody from this table and I'm one person. But I just and I'm not denying anybody's desires or wants or needs. And I understand that we're also talking about needs. But that five million dollars that the contract committee is trying to cut. That also, and correct me if I'm wrong, and the board president and CBO and superintendent, that five billion dollars that we're trying to cut is only a relatively small portion of the total amount that has to be cut. So I too don't want to see us get into a position where we're talking about strikes and actions again. And if somebody could help me do the math, I would love that help. But that math is too advanced for me. So I hope we are all able to just look at this thing in context. Those are my comments.
Thank you, trustee Phillips. Are there any other comments from the board? Okay, let's move to a vote. We'll start with trustee Calip.
Calip, yes.
Trustee Cypressert?
Cypressert, yes.
Clerk Smith Folds?
Smith Folds, yes.
Trustee Christian?
Ah, yes.
Trustee Reckler?
Reckler, yes.
Trustee Phillips?
Yes.
And I'm a yes as well, pass unanimously. Thank you so much. We're now moving to action item E two provisional intern permits. Dr. Johnson, pass to you.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, President Gonzalez Hoi. Good evening, members of the board. The provisional internship permit allows our district to fill staffing needs with teachers entering credential programs. Are there any questions?
Thank you. Do we have any public comment on this item, Ms. Cornejo?
No public comment.
Great. Board, any questions? Okay, is there a motion?
I move that we accept the provisional internship permit, PIP.
Okay, I'll second. Board, are there any comments? Okay, let's move to a vote. Trustee Calip?
Calip, yes.
Trustee Cypressert?
Cypressert, yes.
Clerk Smith Folds?
Smith Folds, yes.
Trustee Christian?
Ah, yes.
Trustee Reckler?
Reckler, yes.
Trustee Phillips?
Yes.
And I'm a yes as well, pass unanimously. And our last action item is variable term waivers. Dr. Johnson, pass to you again.
Thank you again. Our variable term waivers provide a one year extension for teachers to complete their credential.
Thank you. Ms. Cornejo, do we have any public comment?
No public comment.
Thank you. Board, are there any questions? Okay, is there a motion?
I move that we accept educational code four, four, two, five, eight dot three variable term waivers. Sorry, variable term waivers.
Second.
Thank you. Are there any comments? Okay, let's move to a vote. Trustee Calip?
Calip, yes.
Trustee Cypressert?
Cypressert, yes.
Clerk Smith Folds?
Smith Folds, yes.
Trustee Christian?
Yes.
Trustee Reckler?
Reckler, yes.
Trustee Phillips?
Yes.
And I'm a yes as well, pass unanimously. Okay, now we're moving to our only discussion item, which is a student data presentation. Ms. Neely Johnson, I'm passing it to you.
So, good evening, everyone. Good evening, Board, President Gonzalez Hoi, Dr. Hurst, Cabinet and Community. This evening, we have directors, Dr. Chilcot, Ms. Sanji Bell. We have principal, just wait for her hand, Ms. Williams, Principal Matt Sloan from Chavez. And his teacher, Ms. Buster. And we will be doing a, sorry. We will be doing a overview of our cycle one data. Specifically, I ready, our star data and our ESGI. Which stands for educational software for guiding instruction, which is for TK proficiency. And so I bring both of them to do the overview. You'll be hearing about the data. We'll be talking about our coherence strategies. As well as sharing some literacy practices and math practices from our two sites.
Thank you. As Ms. Sonia Neely Johnson said, we're gonna be talking about a data overview, the coherent strategies. And then when we bring out data every time, we want to make sure that we're bringing some stories of really what's happening in the schools that is driving our data. So just this particular presentation is at the close of our fall local assessment window. Actually, if we can go to the next slide, please. Thank you. We use the street data frame to talk about the different levels of data that we're gonna be bringing you. I remind you that on September sixth, the team, the assessment team brought to you the preliminary Sback data. And we talk about what that shows around our improvement, our, the, our outcomes for our students. This is the close of the local assessment, which is ESGI star and I ready assessment window. And then in the winter, which is January, we'll come again and talk more about the progress that we've seen throughout the year at the close of that window. And then we also have a spring window, which we actually typically don't present afterwards, but that's the close of our assessment cycle. So this is cycle one. And so we're talking right now about more map data, which is, like I said, our local assessment data. And then we're gonna bring it down also to some practices that we're engaged in that is getting closer to street level data, to student experience, to how we are observing classrooms and working to have coherence practices to, to drive our outcomes. Next slide, please. And so I'll begin with the, or we'll begin with the data overview and Ms. Sanji Bell will come and talk about ESGI. Thank you.
Good evening. The data that you see in front of you is from our educational, sorry, educational software for guiding instruction, which is the ESGI. Our assessment for our TKs, our little ones that are primed and ready to go. And looking at our data, it appears that our students have come to campus with fifty percent of them being proficient or reaching the end of the year proficiency for what we expect for our students for uppercase letters. The ESGI has about six tests that they assess TK students in for proficiency. And this data is for one of them in particular. Next slide. And for our focal subgroups, African American students, Hispanic and Latino students. We see similar things where students are at fifty percent, fifty percent of our students are at proficiency level. Next slide. And this is representative of our sped and EL population of students. Next slide. And next, this is I ready, our new assessment, our newest assessment this year. This data represents our students in grades first through eighth. And I ready is an assessment that evaluates our children in approximately six different domains. This one represents the one for reading and literacy. The top two colors, the blue and the green represent those students. Actually, the blue represents those students that are at or above proficiency level. At their typical growth, which is where they stand right now is their first initial assessment. And the green represents those students that as of the first assessment are projected to be at or above proficiency. Next slide. And these next couple of slides also show again our focal groups for African American students. Sped students, Hispanic and Latino students, and also our ELs. Next slide. Next slide. So this, I think, gives us probably the best snapshot in terms of how our students are performing. And this slide comes directly from our I ready data. This is our district guide data and it represents the domains that we spoke about. The top ones, directly speaking to phonics, that's phonema, sorry. Phonological awareness, phonics and high frequency words. And the green in particular, the striated green represents proficiency. And those areas for our students, and I think this is where we could do a little celebrating because it speaks to our site leaders as instructional leadership. It speaks to their intentionality around building a space for foundational skills and making that time sacred. Our use of literacy coaches in those schools, especially the ES, or excuse me, the early literacy skills grant schools have worked really diligently with literacy coaches to be intentional around data analysis and teaching this, the teachers how to use analysis with their instructional practices so that there's fluidity and students move through intervention and also looking at intervention for all students. So this is where we are making some gains. If you look at the latter portion, it represents the the domains represented there are for the comprehension side, literature, instructional text and vocabulary. And this is where our work continues with strengthening our student skills. So now that they've acquired the reading skills, they can move forward and be able to synthesize text and use good reader skills. Next slide. So we've done a lot of talking about Scarborough's reading rope and it's how it represents balanced literacy. If you look at the green and the blue side of the rope, that is, that correlates with the work that we're doing with the previous slide with regards to how our students are feeling with the acquisition of reading. And the top portion is the work that we have to do around building readers as being competent in language, language arts and comprehension. Developing our students in terms of vocabulary skills and their ability to synthesize text. And some of the ways that we're addressing this is through our earlier presentation around the literacy task force, where we are making decisions about what literacy looks like for the students in our district. And also, we are supporting, excuse me, we're supporting administrators with a instructional practice guide, the IPG you've probably heard of. Our executive directors are leading our administrators. And this is where they are drilling down on three action steps that we've identified in the district that are of paramount importance to our students. And this is around looking at our instructional practices. Are we allowing children to have productive struggle? Are the teachers leading the instruction or are we giving students an opportunity to demonstrate mastery? Also around vocabulary development that we know is essential and also around culturally aligned literature that is engaging to students. So this concludes my portion of the two assessment tools that we're using. Thank you. And I'll pass it back to Dr. Chilcot.
Thank you. Give me one second to call this up. This has my notes on it, which I might need. Not always me. Okay, so I'm now gonna shift to talking about STAR. So those were the ESGI and the I ready scores. So the STAR is still being given in grades nine through eleven, except for Hercules High, which is engaged in an I ready pilot. As we consider the possibility of shifting to I ready for the entire district. And so for STAR, one question that came up was the orientation of this particular slide. Because it has the below benchmark, above the add or above benchmark, which does not match the way it's represented in some of the state visuals. And I'll just say that we're working with EduClima to try to improve on the way our visualizations are. So we'll probably flop that to have the add or above in the future, but just couldn't do it for this one. So we're just above thirty two percent on Sback in both twenty two, in twenty twenty two and twenty twenty three. And the proficiency levels are within two percentage points on STAR for the last three fall scoring windows. Although, in full transparency, the high school participation rates have been low and they're twice the, the rate this year through our concerted work of the executive directors to ensure that we are having all of our students assess and making the, the data valid. So this year should be more representative of our actual scores. And as you can see, thirty eight point thirty nine percent are at or above benchmark. One thing to bring up at this point is the different construct between the STAR data and the I ready data. The I ready data, if you noticed in the previous slides that were shared by Mrs. Bell. Had the five different levels and the blue is on grade level now, is proficient on the grade level now. It's a slice in time because it's criterion referenced. grade level now, is proficient on the grade level now. It's a slice in time because it's criterion referenced. The green is projected proficiency at the end of the school year. And so that number is a little bit lower, but it's because it's talking about right now who is proficient of end of year grade level at the moment. And so if that, if that makes sense, whereas this one is a norm reference test, so those numbers don't add up in the same way. You really can't compare STAR and iReady because of the construct of those tests. But I wanted to make sure I was bringing that up. Next slide, please. With every representation, we always want to break it down by different ethnic groups. And as you can see here, there's roughly a ten percentage point difference between our African American and Latino students and our high school students as a whole. And so again, this is really the work that we're doing. When I talk about coherent strategies around how we're observing classroom instruction and trying to create, use the same tool to create coherent systems around how we observe and how we drive instruction and improvement with an eye to equity across our system. Next slide, please. This one is the EL and special education students. One thing that I want to bring up is some ELD ones don't take the the STAR assessment because it's not appropriate. And also, the quite low proficiency rate on of the EL students is in part because EL students, when they're proficient, reclassify. And so they wouldn't no longer be categorized as EL students. And so that number would be affected by that. But we still want to include that data as well as the special education data, which definitely shows that there's some work to do to bring those students up in the same level of improvement as the the rest of our our students. At this point, we're going to shift to the next slide and I'm going to invite Esola Roscoe, our ELMA director, to speak about reclassification.
Thank you, Gabe. Always an honor to present good news on reclassification and its data. So as you can see, the positive is that we have been meeting our goals. When we meet our goals, that's a very good step. That means the plans and the PD and the training is working. Now, last year we made our eight percent goal. This year, we're on path to meet our ten percent goal. That means we're increasing by two hundred more students being reclassified this year, and that's a two percent increase. That being said, our plans do connect with our population, which is thirty percent newcomers. And I want you to remember that data point because one of our goals is to expand newcomer programs. We're also creating supplemental materials for newcomers, which includes elevation. It includes our English Turner Toolkit of Resources and two other specific supplemental resources. Now, why is that thirty percent important when it comes to our reclassification data? Well, we need to know who the newcomer students are for this to work. So for example, in our district, we have thirty percent newcomers. Charter schools have ten percent newcomers compared to us. And we're only two percent points in terms of reclassification. That means something we're doing here is working. Let's compare ourselves to the state. The state's at sixteen percent. We're getting there as well and they have five percent newcomers less than us. It is a pleasure and honor always to have newcomers because when they reclassify, we see in comparison to these results that they excel in comparison to other students. So once again, that thirty percent newcomer base and our plans for newcomer growth here in terms of supplemental resources and pathways is working. That's very, very good news.
Excellent. Thank you. Yeah, next slide, we're talking about, then we're going to shift to coherent strategies. So when we talk about data and the outcomes that we're seeing, we also want to converse around really what we're doing. That's why we invited the two principals up here, their school teams, to talk about what practices we're seeing that lead to these positive outcomes in the in the data. And in terms of coherent strategies, again, I'm going to refer to the street data framework. We're digging down closer to that street data level, down closer to the student experience by talking about what's happening in the classroom. So next slide, please. So now we're going to talk about the Instructional Practice Guide. When I say coherence strategies, what I'm talking about is this particular observation tool. We could have chosen from a number of observation tools. We chose this one because a number of our schools were already using this particular tool and had been trained on its use. And so we're able to tap into the expertise of some of our school leaders to help guide this process as we roll it out to principals and ILTs across the district. And so the IPG, the Instructional Practice Guide, is a tool to norm our conversations on instruction. It's to tighten our conversation on diagnosis so we can design practices that best serve our students. So again, to say that, it's really to tighten the conversations on the diagnosis for what we're seeing so that we can design the best practices to improve our student outcomes across the system. Oh, I think this one, so you have to tap three times because it's got the active. Yeah, you can just go through all those to the next full slide, please. So one more, I guess. Thank you. So the IPG is built around the resource, research of Richard Elmore and his his theories around the instructional core. And basically what this is, and I'll actually just read the quote, because I know not everybody at home can see this. To improve student learning, you can raise the level of the content that students are taught. You can each increase the skill and knowledge of the teachers. Bring, sorry, let me try that again. You can increase the skill and knowledge that teachers bring to the teaching of that content and you can increase the level of students' active learning of the content. That's it. And I really want to highlight that that's it. What the Instructional Core is about is you have student, you have teacher, you have content. Those are the three areas that you can push on and change practices to improve student outcomes. And so the IPG, the Instructional Practice Guide, is an observational tool that allows us to pull apart different aspects of those three areas of the Instructional Core and have common observations and common data to talk about to lift up the practices that are creating improvement across our system. Next slide, please. I won't spend too much time on this or the next slide, but I wanted to include it just to show the construct of the IPG itself. It's basically a rubric where you score different aspects of classroom practice. So Core Action One focuses on the selection of the text of the curriculum to ensure that you have rigorous curriculum in all classrooms and in front of students. Core Action Two focuses on the questions and tasks students are given. And Core Action Three focuses on who students engage with and what they are doing. Next slide, please. So right now, or actually just in the past principal meeting and next in the APVP meeting, as soon as we return after break, we were focused on Core Action Three A. So what we did is we showed a teaching video to all the principals and we calibrated our scoring using the IPG on Core Action Three A. And so we were trying to discern from watching the teaching that was going on in this video. Do students, did students do the majority of the work of the lesson to uncover deeper meaning from the text and to build knowledge of the world through speaking, listening, reading, or writing? So really trying to focus on that practice of what students were doing, who they were engaged with within the lesson. And then to calibrate our scoring around that to better understand this observation tool so the principals could go out and try to use it a little bit more on their sites. One thing that I want to highlight very strongly in this, this is non-evaluatory. The IPG is really about driving instruction into form that it is not meant in any way, shape, or form for evaluation within the classroom. It's about us strengthening the conversations we're able to have amongst educators at every site and across sites around what's happening in our schools. Next slide, please. Oh, sorry, I thought we were on that one. Next slide, please. And then the continued work. So we're going to continue with the monthly principal professional learning sessions. And the way we're breaking this up is we have new to IPG principals, elementary principals, we have new to IPG secondary principals, and we have leaders who have worked with IPG in previous years. And again, we're really trying to tap into the expertise of the leaders within our system that have been using this tool for a while and have found it to improve their practices to help us drive improvement across the district. Next slide, please. So this is literacy and Sanji Bell is going to take over in a moment. But next slide, but I'm going to do these two briefly. So just to be really clear on on the construct of how we selected the schools that we're bringing before you. So in that nine-six meeting, we talked about bright spots that we found within the preliminary Sback scores. And this is a map made by our data and reporting department that shows the different schools that had above three percent improvement proficiency across from the two years, from spring twenty-two into spring twenty-three. And so we highlighted that. And then the next, next slide, please. And then the next thing we did was we dug into our local assessments to to see if we could find the same thing happening in our initial assessment for fall. So the reason why I'm giving this one is because I want to highlight a mistake that's actually in the visualization on this slide. And I want to say thank you, Trustee Reckler, for bringing it up because you were exactly right. The data is correct, but the visualization uses both the, if you remember when I was talking about the blue and the green in the previous iReady slides, it does both the currently proficient and the projected proficiency. So it's a larger number right now than the actual proficiency at this moment. So I just wanted to be able to highlight that. It doesn't change the trend because you can see the improvement trend on the visualization that's on the screen. But just to be really clear around the validity of the data, it is a little bit of a mismatch because this one is taking both the currently proficient, meaning those that are proficient, showing proficiency of of end of year standards and those that are projected to be proficient by the end of the year, which are both good things. And this is still a valid number, but just not representative of what was intended to be represented on this particular slide. So thank you for catching that. And with that, I will pass it to Ms. Bell and Ms. Williams. And we will bring up Bayview to talk about literacy.
I would like to say that I have the esteemed pleasure of introducing to you Teresa Williams. She's a principal at Bayview Elementary School. And one of the administrators that I've had the pleasure to work with over the last, I I keep trying to say two years, but it's really been like a year and let's see, two weeks. But we first started working together because Bayview is one of the focal school sites, the Mission Critical Seven, the schools that have high populations of African American students. And we continued that work on this year with taking over the work for the early literacy skills block and working with the site and watching them build out and grow their foundational skills block and really transform the school. There's some things that I would like to highlight about Bayview is that the environment is extremely welcoming. The front office is exceptionally high functioning. Everybody seems to understand systems. And I think what is most striking and probably the most fun are the babies there. They absolutely love Mrs. Williams and everybody understands that she is the instructional leader there. I think even they know her footsteps. They straighten up and get, position themselves and get where they're supposed to be. There's a tremendous amount of school pride and school pride and you see it in school climate and you see the babies feel very comfortable. So I wanted her to be able to share with you some of her experiences because this site has worked very diligently with their literacy coach and have been very intentional around foundational skills and some of the other aspects that we've worked with schools in terms of how they're utilizing the grant. So without further ado, Mrs. Williams.
Good evening, everyone. Good evening, Superintendent Hirst, President Gonzalez-Hoy, to all the board members and to the cabinet. My name is Teresa Williams. I am principal of Bayview Elementary School. I am honored to be here tonight to talk about Bayview's Bright Spot and ELA. But before I do, I would like to give a shout out or a few shout outs, if I may, to people that played an instrumental role in this work. So first, my vice principal instructional specialist, Chang Sei Child, Saint Child, which was instrumental in a few things, our cycle of inquiry, our professional learning communities and our student town hall meetings. Next, our previous literacy coaches, Catherine Balanti, which focused on early literacy foundational skills and was responsible for the implementation of the SIPs program. Also Sandy Brombaum, which worked with our fourth through sixth grade students and teachers on the units of study Read Aloud. And then finally, to all of our teachers and support providers that continue to do the work for our Bayview scholars so that we can continue to see the needle move for ELA and math. Our instructional, structure of practice over the past few years has, as Ms. Sanji Bell said, early literacy foundational skills. Although the focus is on early literacy foundational skills, it is important to note that SED is the foundation of the work that you see tonight. In order to teach our students, we knew that we had to reach them and we had to reach them on a social, emotional level. After coming back from COVID, we noticed that a number of our students struggled with social emotional skills. Therefore, we wanted to follow, focus on the following. Focus on two of the competencies, which was self-awareness and self-management. We knew that if students were able to regulate their thoughts and emotions, that they would be aware of their surroundings socially, thereby building better relationships with their peers and the adults around them. We taught our students an I Am affirmation, which taught them to be proud of who they are. We had monthly town hall meetings to acknowledge students' hard work under the social emotional umbrella. And we wanted to make sure that every morning students had social and emotional learning that way that they can just go through their day and be able to process. This work continues to go with even more support, but that is a snapshot of the foundational work that we've done for our SED. Our next steps for that bright spot was to analyze the iReady data. Once we looked at it, we had a team of people. We had our admin. After about a year, we had a literacy coach, RSP teachers, para-professionals, graduate tutors, and our OAS support provider. We noticed a trend from grades K through six, and that trend was in phonics. And we realized that if students weren't able to master those phonics skills, they wouldn't be able to read fluently in third grade. And we knew from fourth through sixth grade that they would struggle with reading comprehension, fluency, vocabulary, and so on. So the first thing we needed to do was get a literacy coach. We got our literacy coach last year. The literacy coach was fabulous. She came in, got the data team together. We were doing a six to eight week cycle, six weeks where students would have a lesson of SIPs. They would be pre-tested, do those lessons, and then post-test it. She would do push-in into the classrooms and pull out small groups. Our focus would be the on-watch students. We wanted to move those students to proficient. After that, she would model for the teachers, take half of that teacher's group, while the teacher would take the rest of the students to do intervention. This would continue to go on until we began to see a little progress. We still have a lot of work to do. Right now, we are in the need of another literacy coach. And things are looking bright because we may have one coming in. But I do want to say thank you for this opportunity. We do have a lot of work to do and we're looking forward to moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you. And so similarly for the math bright spot. So the nine-six data and looking at that, we saw a change in Chavez that indicated a strong improvement in math. Next slide, please. And so we again pulled the data from the from iReady to show the the increase of percentage rates across the learning across the the year, which matched up with that with that data. And rather than hearing me talk about the data, it's always exciting to listen to schools. Um and rather than hearing me talk about the data, uh it's always exciting to listen to schools talk about really what they're doing to drive that data. So I will pass it to Principal Sloan to talk about the work that is happening at Chavez. Thank you so much. Next slide, please.
Thank you, esteemed board members, Board President Gonzalez Hoi and Superintendent Hearst for this opportunity to discuss our growth and acknowledge all of the hard work and dedication of our families, teachers and staff. We saw measurable improvement in our mathematics data at Chavez, growing more than eight percent proficiency overall from our beginning iReady assessment to the spring administration in the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three school year. Our second grade team supported our scholars to grow more than eleven percentage points during that same window. We are so proud of Ms. Guzman, Ms. Hernandez and Ms. Manfredi. Also, hot off the presses, we just received news yesterday from the math department that our third grade team had the highest number of minutes on average for students on Zern in the district. A huge shout out to Ms. Arellano, Ms. Pierce and Mr. Regaña. Our former math coach and now phenomenal first grade teacher, Ms. Philbin, led Chavez's initial adoption of Zern as a curricular supplement. And we would not be making this growth without her school-wide support with Zern implementation. Next slide, please. But we know that our growth in mathematics as a school community is truly a team-wide effort. In addition to our students working hard on the curriculum and the work they are given, we take a number of intentional steps to ensure that students have what they need to make progress and growth. We align professional development around key concepts and areas for growth and we utilize Zern as a supplemental curriculum to ensure students think critically about and solve complex, common core aligned math tasks. Next slide, please. We leverage our collaboration calendar to support the needs based on data of students and teachers. This invaluable time as a whole staff is spent doing lesson internalization, which provides teachers time as individuals and as grade-level teams to internalize, practice and reflect on their lessons, anticipate student misconceptions and come up with next steps to support students, all before the lesson begins. At this point, I'd like to pass the mic to Ms. Buster, one of our fantastic fifth grade teachers, to discuss her experiences teaching math at Chavez.
Thank you, board members and Superintendent Hearst for having me here this evening and for allowing me to share the highest leveraged strategies that I use to support my learners at Chavez. In room fifty, we focus on collaborative discourse, which helps students use each other as partners in learning beyond just being neighbors in class. To ensure collaborative discourse is productive and focused on the lesson objective, we use the following strategies. We use sentence frames, which are introduced one at a time to support all students and especially our English language learners. We hold partners accountable for sharing each other's thinking to ensure that all students are on task and engaging in the work of the lesson. We set the expectation that students justify their answers and elaborate on their thinking through teacher facilitation and asking questions such as how do you know and tell me more? We use these collaborative discourse tools and strategies in subjects beyond math to help foster a positive learning community. Our vision is to have learning environments where students value each other's thinking, exhibit a depth of knowledge when approaching grade-level tasks and feel like they are seen, heard and valued as critical thinkers and contributors to the learning process. Thank you for your time and for hearing one perspective of the story behind our growth in math. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Um that's going to be the uh end of our overall presentation. Um but I do want to close out with just saying thank you, especially for the um school uh teams. Uh you know, staying here late to really share the powerful work that they're engaged in. Um and it's so wonderful to hear from a teacher about what's really happening in classrooms to drive um instruction, to come up here and talk about data. Uh clearly, I like doing it. I got excited when a mistake was pointed out. But uh really hearing about what the teachers are doing to uh create that improvement, that's really what we're all here to support. So I just want to thank all of you for your hard work um and for welcoming us tonight. Thank you.
Thank you so much to everyone who presented tonight. Dr. Dr. Chilga, thank you so much. Um do we have any public comment on this item?
No public comment.
Thank you. Board, we're gonna now move to questions. Would anyone like to start with questions? We'll start clerks and folks. And we're gonna do three and then if someone needs more than that, please let me know and we'll do a second round.
Thank you so much for the presentation. My first question is, um when you showed the data, I didn't see kindergarten. Can you tell me why?
Yeah, thank you. So we offset the kindergarten window um back beginning in October because obviously the littles get here, we want to socialize them into class. So we did close that window and we have the data. But for the production of this um particular presentation, to get it to you on time, it is grades one through eight in iReady and nine through eleven in uh for STAR and then ESGI uh being the younger. So we did miss that one pocket specifically for that reason, but it is included now and we'll make sure you get that.
Thank you so much. My second question is, can we get a look at Hercules data since Hercules is piloting iReady? Was their data in there or no?
It was, um but it would be, I mean, it'd be one school amongst um whatever that would be, the forty schools that are included in iReady. So yes, um I can pull that out and share it with the board just to be able to see that. Um we haven't started um reflecting on the data yet to really have deeper conversations around how we want to move forward, uh but that data is available.
My last question for this round, um so Hercules is the only school, only high school piloting iReady, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, I'm complete. I have one more in a minute.
Thank you. Uh we'll go to trustee Reckler and then we'll go to trustee Christian.
So thank you very much for the presentation. Um and I'll save it for comments. I just want to thank you all for being here. Um I just have a couple of things. It's really about how to how to read the data. Help me a little bit. Um but first, did you have goals for this round? Like in October, we want to move people X amount or you know, did you have any goals either around growth or around, you know, what you want to see and how do you do that? Could you talk about that a little?
Sure. So um for this particular window, no, because it's a baseline. We piloted with some schools last year, so we have some iReady data, but we did not have it for all of our K-eight schools. This is the first window where we're having iReady um data for all of our um schools. So although we do look at those comparisons, um we didn't have specific uh growth goals at that time because i- it's the uh the initial window, it's the baseline. Um we do have, there's a, there's growth goals within uh the iReady platform. And what we our overall goal is to be able to see across the year is that a hundred percent of our students achieve typical growth and that twenty percent of our students achieve stretch go- growth. I'm not really prepared to, you know, roll out exactly how those those measures um are defined at this point, but yeah, we do have growth measures for the year, just not for this particular window.
Okay, and there are the, and is it now or will it eventually be by student?
I'm sorry, I didn't, I couldn't hear.
What, is it now or will it eventually be by student? Will it be student-specific?
Meaning when we look at the data, we can drill down to student-level data within the platform. I I if that's what you're asking, I'm not completely clear on it, but yes, the growth goals will be by student. And so we'll look at individual students and know whether they achieve typical growth over the school year or stretch growth. And we use the stretch growth um to guide our instructional plans for students. Um and so we're onboarding and we have professional development ongoing right now for the teachers. So we're somewhere in the midst of training everybody um on how to use the data in that way, but this data is really actionable um and uh allows us to use it in a formative fashion to be able to build out our instruction. So we're excited about that, but we're at the beginning of the journey of really socializing that across the system.
Got it. Um and then a question on how to interpret some of this data. So any one of these red, orange, yellow, green, blue graphs, it has, you know, like where students are. So when you look at a a slice of like all your one through eights and you've got significant portion of kids that are three or more grade levels below. What? How does it read or interpret maybe a first grader or a second grader who hasn't been in the system for three years?
Uh great question. So when you break it out by grade, you wouldn't see those color bands or the three below because they can't by definition be three grades below. So the representation that you're looking at is the full, um is the district across the board. And so those are the percentage of students that are three or below, but you couldn't do that with a K or a first grade student. So i- if you look at it by grade, you'll see the colors start to enter in to filter in with the older kids.
Okay, thank you very much. I'm complete.
Thank you. Uh trustee Christian?
Yes, uh thank you. Uh thank you for the presentation and appreciate that. Uh I guess the question I you you guys showed on the map, um like certain schools are doing well in um proficiency or certain ones are doing. And then the other part would be how do we, you know, get all of our, you know, students up to par?
No, absolutely. Um and we focus on those bright spots because our intention is to capture the practices at those sites that are leading to that improvement and to use those um across the district. Um you heard Principal Sloan talk about the recent news of their high Zern usage. Um Zern is a supplementary math curriculum that is guided by our math department um and Mark Lobaco and Zern leads across the district. Those are teacher leads at sites that we believe that that being used as a supplement is a part of what will bring up our math instruction. So it's capturing a lot of what you just heard about uh what they were doing um as well as uh some of the literacy um practices that are happening at Bayview and we're using that to help us learn what's effective and what will move the needle at all of our schools. Um so that's exactly the the purpose of um this presentation and that map.
Okay, and uh so so iReady is at the certain, the those, the ones on the map?
I I'm sorry, I missed the the last.
iReady are the ones on the ones you you showed on the map?
Oh, no, the the map is actually the the preliminary Sback data from September sixth. And then with these two particular schools, I dove into the iReady data to uh to verify or to see the comparison between the Sback and the iReady um to show the uh the growth over the uh the school year. So I showed you both for those two schools. Um and then obviously the iReady through the uh the first part of the presentation, but those maps were specific to Sback.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Uh now we're gonna go to our second round. I think Clarkson, you're the only one, so go ahead.
I just have one question and it's just if you can help me remember, why are we not using MAP growth assessment anymore? You remember that? You remember a couple of years? Okay, why are we not doing that? Is it just, well, why are we not doing that anymore?
Um yes, I do remember it. Um I would have to research what, I mean, we've been focused on rolling out iReady um and like did this current local um assessment. Um but I don't have a a ready answer for that. So let me look into that and get back to you, please.
Thank you so much. I'm complete.
Thank you. I actually, I do have one question. It's for Ms. Williams. Thank you. Hi.
Hi.
Um well, I'm gonna end my comments. I just want to congratulate you as well. Uh but Bayview was one is was our lowest performing school in this district just a few years ago. Um how do you leverage your funding that you get? Which obviously has shown results.
Well, it requires the village that we have at Bayview, uh full-service community, um making sure we can utilize some of that money to bring in tutors. Um we just sit down as a team and really look at the areas of need. And what we notice is that socio-emotional is one of our greatest needs. And as I prefaced early on, in order to teach our students, we have to first reach them. And so what we do is we are very strategic in terms of that SPSA and making sure that we follow that blueprint so that we can meet our student needs. Um we still have a steep climb, but um I believe the team that we have now is all invested and doing that work.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Really appreciate it. Um okay, board, now we're gonna move to our comments. Uh we're gonna put three minutes up on the board, please. Um who would like to go start? Trustee Reckler, we'll start with you.
Yes, just a few brief things. I want to thank everybody for being here tonight, especially the principals who worked all day and are here tonight. So I'll keep the comments brief. I want to congratulate you both on the data and for sharing your practices. It's really wonderful. And for up uh and to the team for updating the bright spots, both in math and ELA. Um you know, I've been looking at a lot of data at a lot of schools and how they run and you know, if you raise um test scores five percent, that's like really good. I mean, growth is slow, so these numbers are 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 really good and and congratulations on that. Um also, testing is just one point in a child's life. It's just one data point in development. So even though it's important because, you know, it determines funding and how people look at you and you know, it's it is just one point in a long continuum. Um and then um I'm I was on an Edsource uh um call today called re-energizing learning strategies for getting beyond stagnant test scores. And it was so much more than that. It was actually an amazing hour of principals and PACE and people from our superintendents from across the across the state sharing some ideas about what they're doing in their schools and it was phenomenal. Usually they send a link to the video and I'll send it to you, Dr. Hearst. It is really a worthwhile hour. And to send it out to the team, if everybody has an hour just to look at what people are doing in schools, it was really great. And one of the things one of these principals is doing is they have a daily affirmation that they take their students through every single day um about their power and what they can do, what they can achieve and what they accomplish. So um I was very taken by that and hearing it here tonight, I was relieved. I was like, all right, that's great. And with that, thank you very much.
Thank you, trustee Reckler. Clarkson Folds?
Thank you mu- so much for the presentation. Thank you for the um deep dive into data. Thank you, Bayview. Thank you, Chavez, for showing us the possibilities. I would love for us as a district and a board to continue that deep dive because we know where the learning dips down and we know where our children start to struggle. So that's where we need to really push the resources and the support so we don't see it. They come to us at TK, it said fifty-fifty. Fifty are succeeding and fifty percent are around fifty-fifty. So we know where it is. We have to start at the very beginning as soon as they get here. And that should even be in our preschool programs. Let's see where they are. The other thing is whole child assessment. I agree with uh trustee Reckler. Testing is just one. Talking to parents, talking to teachers about where the students are. Some kids just don't test well. And some kids just don't perform at school well, but their parent will tell you every night they read the book to them. Every night they're able to sit down and have a conversation with them. So we have to look at, literally look at the whole child and have a conversation about where they are and what we need to do to support them. So again, thank you uh staff for your presentation. Thank you, principals. Thank you, teachers. It's just the beginning, but we have to go deeper quicker. I'm complete.
Thank you, Clerk Smithwells. Trustee Phillips?
Um I just want to briefly say thank you for uh the presentations this evening. Um when we have an opportunity to highlight bright spots in the district, uh it's good for us uh to do that, but it's also good to do it in a way that's just not um us tooting our own horn, right? But to do it in a way um to build upon. Um and so that's what I saw tonight. I saw bright spots being highlighted, but I saw them being highlighted uh for the purpose of of overall uh improvement. Um and it's good. Um that Bayview was one of the schools that was actually brought out tonight. So I just want to say thank you again uh to everyone for the presentation and the work that uh folks are continuing um to do.
Thank you. Trustee Christian?
Yes, I thank you. Uh I just wanted to say thank, thank you to all the presentation that was given and information, you know, brought clarity to. You know, brought clarity to, uh, everything that's going on. So, um, especially our students, you know, um, we just have, we just have a, a, a lot to do to build our students, the ones that's performing low and helping those students to come up to a, a stronger proficiency. So, uh, so, but I just want to say thank you uh, to all of you who are, have participated in making this happen. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, for my comments, Ms. Buster, Mr. Sloan, thank you so much for being here and the work that you're all doing in math. We don't talk about math enough. So it's really exciting to hear. Uh, Ms. Williams, I want to thank you as well. Um, and it's gonna get a little personal, but as you know, I taught at Baby Elementary School. My wife, my wife and I met each other there and she taught there for many years as well. Bayview holds a special place in my heart and it was, it has really kept me up at night for many years that Bayview had gone the way that it had gone. Uh, and seeing the results tonight, not, it's not just very impressive because it's, it's a bright spot that we should continue to, um, bring up because this school is black and brown. But also because this school is making a transformation that I didn't think could be possible this quickly. And I think it speaks about your leadership, speaks about the leadership of teachers. Um, and I just want to thank you for that. Um, and really both schools, but like I mentioned, because I think Bayview, cause I saw it being one of above average school. When the charter school opened up the hill and we lost so many resources and teachers and students who were high performing. We saw it take a huge dip, right? So I just want to thank you for that. Um, because maybe tonight I'll sleep well just for one night. Although I do want to say slides twelve and thirteen will also keep me up, right? A little bit. So, so I, I liked what trustee Phillips said because I think it's couched really well, how we are mentioning an amazing school that is doing great work, two amazing schools that are doing good work, but we also are showing the areas that we need to continue to push in our system. Um, so thank you for tonight's presentation. Um, I did want to ask for one thing, Mr. Orosco, I would love to see their classification data, um, broken down by school. Uh, including how many E Ls we have at each school, just so that we can see the progress being made, uh, there. Um, uh, so if you could send that to the board, I would really appreciate it. Um, okay, and that's it. Thank you so much for being here tonight. Okay, board, now we're gonna move to comments from the board. As we're gonna do three minutes because it's a little later than usual. Does anyone who like to go start it? Are there no comments tonight? Trustee Phillips?
Uh, thank you, uh, again to everyone who presented on this evening, uh, and thank you uh, for the meeting overall. Um, I do want to back up just for a moment and talk a little bit about my comments earlier, uh, regarding the district and its financial state. So I've been talking about the district's budget, uh, since I got on the board. And I know, or I suspect anyway, that I sound like, uh, a broken record sometimes, maybe even Charlie Brown's teacher. But it's important, right? Um, and I think what happens when we enter, you know, into this season, um, it's, it's difficult oftentimes for everyone to get on the same page. Um, and to agree on the underlying facts, right, of what the district's financial situation is. Um, and there's good reason, uh, for there being disagreement because we have all seen, um, numbers come out and in six months or nine months or twelve months later, the numbers are not correct, right? So, you know, to staff and, and to the county, um, it is really important as we enter into this, you know, bargaining season, um, that our numbers are, are really tight, right? And that we're transparent. Um, because I think it makes it difficult, right, to bargain when you're wondering if six months later, you're gonna find out that, you know, the numbers were wrong, you know, and there was more money on the table because nobody who's bargaining for their members wants to leave, you know, m- money on the table. If we're just being honest, right? Um, but then at the same time, right, where I'm asking staff to, to do that, you know, I'm also asking, right, if staff does that, you know, and the county does that and, and the transparency is there, right, that, um, people accept that. You know, uh, because it's extremely important, um, that yes, you know, folks are paid, you know, the wages that they deserve and that they need. It's extremely important that, you know, all of our students have teachers in their classrooms, our regular credential teachers in their classrooms. But it's also extremely important that everybody gets paid, right? Um, so there's a balance and I just hope that we strike it, um, and that we're able to strike it in a way that projects everyone forward in a unified way.
Thank you. Just to recite, do you have any comments?
Sure, just a couple of things. So I cannot believe that we're rolling into Thanksgiving break. Crazy how fast time has gone. And so I just hope that everybody has a refreshing and restful week off and you know, practices some gratitude. I think it's really important. We have a lot and, you know, concentrate on what you have. Um, I'd also like to make a suggestion for retreats, board retreats and special meetings. Um, uh, this last retreat bounced around on the calendar like four or five times. And what I'd like to recommend is if we could get a list together of what we think is coming and then give us some options as to when it might work for all of us. We might get some better attendance. Um, granted, it's hard to get all people together all at the same time, but if there were just some options in the doodle bowl or something like that, you know, it, it might make it easier, um, you know, to get people together. And with that, enjoy, enjoy the week.
Thank you. Uh, trustee Christian?
Yes, thank you. I want to close out this evening. Uh, first, just thanking everyone, uh, for the presentation and uh, all that was presented. And, uh, what I want to do is give some updates on some events that I attended. On yesterday, I attended the Ruby Bridges Walk at, uh, King School, uh, with, uh, Helen Burks, the principal there and the city of Richmond mayor, uh, Eduardo Martinez and myself and, um, and also Zalun, uh, Ha- Harrison and, um, and Juanita. Uh, we all participated in the, uh, walk with the students from thirty seventh street of the courthouse all the way to King's, all the way back to King's school. So it was, uh, it was cool. And we had a wonderful time. They served chicken and waffles afterwards, and so we had a great time. And so the Ruby Bridges and then, um, I also want to give some information pertaining to the city of Richmond. Uh, the Richmond Power Program is sponsoring a shop with a, with a kid, with a student. And all of these students come from our district that goes to the Richmond Power Program. Um, so, uh, they wanted me to br- bring that attention to, uh, our school district. And then also, um, the snowball of the city of Richmond is, is coming up. And our students always participated in this, uh, in the snowball for a long time. So this is nothing new that started. This has been going on for, for, uh, years. And so, um, and then also I want to, uh, mention, uh, I attended the, uh, African American, um, parent meeting at Steege Elementary School. Um, last week with, uh, Zalun, Harris and, uh, Juanita, and that was a nice turnout. And so, um, and just to close out, as my time ran out, um, just basically say w- we have a lot of challenges, uh, that we are going to be faced with. And as we do look at a lot of decisions, the things we have to make, um, so time is running out because December be here and then we be in January and next thing you know, you're looking at February and March. So, um, so we just have a lot to do. So, um, basically also I want to mention the rebuilding of the schools. You have, uh, Steege Elementary, uh, Kennedy and Richmond High. Uh, and the community should always be a part of the activities, uh, uh, what's going on, what we're doing here as a district. And also making sure that our cities are involved, city of Richmond is involved in these projects. Thank you.
Thank you. Clerk Smith?
Thank you, everyone. Thank you, President Gonzalez-Hoy for another, uh, very efficient meeting. To my colleagues, I am a firm believer that you do what you want to do. If you want to show up, you show up. If you want to participate, you participate. We all have busy lives. We all have things that we are committed to, but we are also committed to this board and committed to this community and committed to our constituents and committed to the people who voted, our constituents, the people who voted us in. We have a level of commitment to staff. We have a level of commitment to these students. We have a level of commitment to the teachers. You do what you want to do. You do what you believe is a priority. The last thing I want to say and very clearly to everyone that is listening, equity is not enough. Diversity is not enough. Inclusion is not enough. If this district is not moving towards anti-racism, we are not doing enough. And we will never be enough for anyone. I am complete.
Thank you. Trustee Cobb, do you have any comments?
Yes, I'd like to say thank you for all the presentations and I wanted to briefly comment on, um, uh, what and I, and I did last week for our first ever ASC meeting. So we were able to meet, um, the of most of the thirty-two representatives from the both middle and high school sites. So it's definitely important. It's definitely, um, fun and to see, um, kind of what the student body would look like for those who really want to make an impact on, on the W C C U S D community. And, um, it did give, um, us also further insight on like what we, so interesting should focus on. And as this was our first meeting, it's been taking some more time and effort to kind of see what, um, we really want to, uh, speak about. But then some of the things that really stood out to us was, to me personally, was obviously the on-campus connections. Seeing and, um, how students really want to see connection between, um, themselves and their teachers and to kind of, um, manage more of the time and to kind of just be less stressed because of, um, the kind of environment that they're into. And another thing that stood out to me was, um, wanting to see more, um, opportunities. Um, students are, students really value, um, uh, getting more awareness and readiness about a college or even like, uh, what they want to be doing in the future. So, um, those are just some things that stood out to me. And I'm complete.
Thank you. Trustee, say, president, do you have any comments? Okay, thank you so much for my comments. Um, I did want to touch on a couple of things. Um, one, I did want to talk about the budget. Um, I mean, I, I think that so tomorrow I'm going to the dentist to get a night guard. Because I am blanching my teeth at night and I think it's coming from a place. I remember, uh, my first two years on the board, I'm getting really personal with the community here. My first two years on the board, I, I got an ulcer from all of the conversations that we're having. Now I need a night guard. I think the shove is killing me slowly, but I think that it comes back to the hard decisions that we're having to make, right? And I think that because we're having so many budget conversations, the reality is that the budget committee and the work we're doing, we're working incredibly hard. And we're not finding the savings that we should be finding, right? We have found two million dollars so far. We're almost done with the work. The five million dollar, uh, five million, six hundred thousand goal was just the minimum, right, that we needed to find. Our goal was to find more than that, right? Because our budget is twenty-seven million right now, more or less. I'm trying to see Ms. Moses' face, uh, a little bit less. Okay, hopefully less than that, uh, in the twenties. So um, that's keeping me up at night. I think it goes into the conversation that a lot of people are having to, earlier. Um, I hope that the governor surprises us on Jan- in January. I mean, like, I'm like praying that something comes out in January that shows a better picture. But if not, uh, the path to March is going to be tough. Right? And I think that we as a community need to come to understanding what that means. Um, and when the first internal comes in December, that's gonna be a critical meeting that I encourage everybody to show up to, to listen in. Ms. Moses and her team are gonna show and be transparent. I think that they're being more transparent than I've ever seen the budget. Um, at least in my recent years. Um, so I really encourage everyone to get involved because, um, I am really concerned um, from, from my perspective. Um, with that said, I did want to talk a little bit about this retreat and special meetings. It was a nightmare to find a date. I'm looking at Rosa for this last retreat. Everybody couldn't, was not available. I literally had to go with a date where I was available, to be honest, and I just put it on the calendar because no one could be, do the dates that we sent. Um, people could, can't do the weekends, people can't do the evenings, people can't do the mornings, people can do Monday through Friday. Like, so I was like, okay, let's just pick a day that works for me, that worked for me, to be honest. I think that we have to figure something out. Maybe a doodle is the right thing, but, um, every day someone has sent me something that they can't do a day. So we have to figure it out, board. Um, although, you know, I'm, I'm always open to just not having special meetings. Um, but I did want to also just end with happy Thanksgiving, everyone. I hope that everybody has a restful week. I ran out of time. All right. Thank you so much, everyone. Our next board meeting is December sixth here at La Vanya de John. I adjourn us at nine thirty-eight.